Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whose justice we serve.
Roll call, please. Bunton?
Presser.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Mensah?
Here.
Raker?
Here.
Need a motion to excuse Commissioner Blash?
So moved.
Second roll call. Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Does anybody have any? Just one meeting? One meeting to announce. The Harbor Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, June 23rd, at 9:00 a.m. here at City Hall. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Adoption of the agenda, the amended agenda everybody has in front of them. 9A has been removed.
I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
Amended.
Thank you.
Have a second. Roll call. Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell? Public participation? This is time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and that you adhere to our three-minute rule.
Good evening. Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. I'm here on behalf of Mary Ann Bullock concerning the landlocked property at 95 inches. She presented a proposal to buy the land. And what I'm asking is the city to consider this. Because what would happen if you considered this is that her aim is to enjoin that property into the landlocked property. Therefore, that eliminates a problem that has been in existence since the 70s, the landlocked property. Otherwise, if you try to or attempt to sell that property, what's going to happen is whoever buys it has to give up 10 to 15 feet of that property in order for her to have access. So we just want to eliminate that problem and, you know, from now on in perpetuity, if, you know, and I'm hoping and asking that you would consider the offer that she has on the table and take that into consideration. And that would take any legal liabilities from the city later on if they would have to try to attempt to sell the property to somebody else. It would be in the best interest of the city to sell the property to her and to alleviate this ongoing problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Michelle Weiss, 18200 Terra Drive, Clinton Township. Just want to do a service announcement for our Independence Day celebration coming up on Friday, June 26th. We will have two bands performing for the first time. Our opening act will be East Side/West Side. Our main act will be Magic Bus. First band will play at 6:00 p.m. and the main act will go on at 8:00 p.m. and the fireworks will be at dusk. Blankets and tarps can be placed on Friday morning starting at 8:00 a.m. Please no steaks. That messes up our irrigation system. And we do have a few boat docks left. So anyone interested in reserving a boat dock for the fireworks, please contact Community Development Department at (586) 469-6818 extension 903. And also, don't forget, our Summer Magic Festival will also be taking place next week starting on Thursday. Hours will be 3 to 11:00. Friday will be 11 to 9:30. Saturday 11 to midnight. And Sunday 11 to 9:00. And this is being put on by a private promoter, so I'd like the city to help support him. Thank you.
You dropped something.
Forgot to tell you about Nashville. Thank you. Our next Nashville in the neighborhood concert will be on July 1st, which is Wednesday, and Natalie Stovall will be the performer. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Gloria Heller, 260 Cass. Picking up where some things were left off last time. Number one, this famous Page 27, I haven't yet read it into the formal record. It was dismissed by the city manager, I believe I heard him say something. "Oh, it's just 1% across the board, total of about $35,000." No, 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 no. I can do arithmetic. When you give somebody a raise from $44,000 to $57,000, is that 1%? The raises ranged from 2% to 23%. 23% for the assistant finance manager. And interesting, I've talked with several past finance managers, not the least of which is Glenn Voorhees. Back when we had a city with more departments and almost twice as many employees, those finance directors never had an assistant. And this one does. Does that tell us that men do a better job and don't need help? Just thought I'd ask. The men who had didn't need an assistant. Now, those raises, like I said, the high was going to take a current rate of $44,000 up to $57.6. And one of the lower ones was going to go 33 to 34. I have a problem with it anyway. Three of these employees, Marilyn, Laura, and Lori Holloway, Lori, yeah, Holland, they're on contracts, they're not union. But you got union employees there. What is Ms. Delugie doing negotiating contracts with union employees? And oh yeah, two of these, Patty and Lori in the Treasurers Department, they're at the same level, grade five. And she gives them disequal raises, one of them 2%, one 6%. I mean, this whole thing was a piece of you-know-what. And I'm kind of sorry to say, I think we put the title "proposed" on it, so if nobody discovered it, it'd just slide on through. And if it was discovered, we could call it proposed. Very unhappy, and so are a lot of the citizens. And I have agreed with some of them. I am going to put petitions out. I have to finish the language with Secretary of State, yet the first petition will be to repeal this city and these property tax. And the second will be to start a city income tax and get it on the November ballot. And as far as, oh, don't worry about it, we'll raise the taxes. We'll lower them. A lot of you are new in town, huh? Heard that before. Back in 84, when they took out the 20 mil for the DDA and we started giving them tip and everybody raised, "Huh, oh, don't worry, it'll be paid off in 20 years and then we'll stop." Well, fiscal year 2004 and '05 came, we're still giving them tip. But my favorite is the water bills. Didn't we just get an increase in the water bill? And back a couple decades, when they hit us quadrupled our water bills for the water treatment plan and all that. They've got to lower them if you want. They've got nothing but publicity.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Daniel Tierpoff, 54 Dorothea. And what I, my concerns was, because I've been told things, I was wondering, I knew people who put their garbage bags right out on the street when they'd do pickups. And somebody told me, I didn't know for sure how true it was that you could get a ticket for it, and just say with parking where you walk the driveway. And it makes me wonder, though, the sheriff's deputies patrol in our neighborhood, they go up and down, and I'm surprised that they failed to notice this. And some of them, I don't know if they know for sure if that's okay to do, or I don't want to say anything because I don't know what to tell them myself. Because I always put my garbage and yard waste out in the front on the city property. But, and I, I was even told that parking, walking across the walk, to me, it just sounds like common sense to me. You just, you get a ticket. And I don't want to even call the cops on them because there's a couple of them around where I live who don't seem like they're in their right mind, and I don't want no trouble. And so, when you get to discussing later on, I just would like to know and always give good input, all of you on the commission. And I appreciate that. And another thing I wondered, I know you can shoot firecrackers, from what I understand, before Patriotic holiday, like July 4th, and a day afterwards. But some of them are just all the time. And sometimes, I have a hard time sleeping as it is. And I'm just, I'm just lucky if I get six hours sometimes, not to mention eight. And it would just sure help if there wasn't so much noise. And I don't know where it's coming from or to pinpoint it, because I know it's coming near me, and I may have an idea, but I just don't know where or if they'll listen to anyone or not unless law enforcement steps in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Connie Stevenson from Michigan. I have concerns about the water treatment plant smell. I've called for years and years and years. They'll stop it, then they'll start. This week, I think I spoke to Steve over the weekend, your city manager. He's finally doing something today, cutting the grass. But the smell gets in my furnace, it gets in my house, carpet, furniture. I'm really sick of it. I mean, no one's, is it because we live down on this end? No one's paying attention? You let your grass get this high? But if it was in my yard, I'd have a fine. The marina, it needs painting? Yes. If it was in my yard, it would have to be painted. The debris around that property around there? That's not going to work. And I will keep coming. I've been calling for years. I had a water bill in '12. She's speaking on a water bill. When they put, when you put your first new drive-by things in, $66,000. Because it was put in backwards, they told me. But now I hear a clunk, a clunk, and the plumber told me it's coming from your gadget. I'm not going to pay him to fix it. They sent Tom in. He pulled a pipe that's been in place for God knows how long. He thought that fixed it. That does not work. So if you have a real licensed plumber that works for the city, I'd like his opinion on it.
Have you spoken with our city manager?
Not about that part. It's just the smell.
Okay.
The smell. I see it takes you, I've been there 16 years. It takes you a while to get things going.
We'll check it on you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Administrative responses to issues in previous meetings?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items this week. Business-related noise complaint. There were a couple of complaints regarding a business on Hubbard. Enforcement actions and permit activity had already been undertaken by the city to address this situation before either of these complaints were received. Community development reports the following activity and results related to this location. A water service permit was issued and scheduled for inspection. Outside activity at this location was a subject of a district court action that resulted from city enforcement. An improper fence installation and subsequent city enforcement led to another district court date as well. And then finally, in association with the certificate of occupancy process, there were building and electrical permits pulled on this property. So, long story short, the city has been aware of issues at that location and has been pursuing enforcement activity and other activity against that property. Secondly, utilities process inquiry. Somebody from the audience has brought up a question related to seeing multiple city trucks at a location in town related to some water department activity and wondering who is responsible for the bills or the costs. The city is responsible for our portion of the water and wastewater systems in the city. Any breakdown associated with our portion of the system is going to be our responsibility. So if we were to go out on a shut-off hypothetically and try to use the existing system that's in place to shut off the water to a given location and something went wrong, broke, malfunctioned, and required additional activity to dig up that location, fix that shut-off valve, that's going to be the responsibility of the city. And that is an ongoing situation the city is paying attention to and enforcing. When you don't pay your water bill after a period of time, you're going to be subject to shut off eventually if the bills are not paid. That's something that we've been working on with our utilities department as well as through our finance department to make sure that we're handling that appropriately and consistently. And that was likely the result of that kind of activity in this particular case. But it does depend on whether the problem is in the city portion of the system or if it's the homeowner's portion of the system. So that's all that I have for administrative responses this week.
In regards to, in regards to the Hubbard issue, can you elaborate on where they're at as far as court is concerned? And if the noise occurs again, should the, especially on a weekend?
Right.
Just calling the sheriff should be the remedy for it?
Correct. And Brian's probably got the most current date. The dates have changed a time or two.
We're still waiting for a new court date to be scheduled through district court. And if there are concerns about noise, please either email or call me or the city manager. Yes.
The last time this happened, it happened on the weekend. Can, are the deputies empowered or aware that, hey, we expect you to enforce? I mean, this case in particular, I think, is going to rear its head again on a weekend when we're not going to have the instruments in place to enforce. So I'm asking the administration to interface with the sheriff's department and let them know what our expectation would be, especially on this one property in particular. Please.
Yeah, we'll duly note that and talk with the sergeant in our substation about that so that they're aware that going into a weekend. And they are pretty much aware of the situation, but we can touch base again, circle back, and make sure that they understand what they can do on a weekend. If that kind of a call comes up again, I'll touch base with Sergeant McFadden on it.
Thank you.
Yep.
City manager Brown, would you kind of explain to the audience what part of the water system is the city's responsibility up to the curve, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, it varies by location, so I really can't get into too many specifics. But it's basically, there's an area that's from the underneath of the home into the house that typically is going to be the homeowner's. Up until that point where there's connections being made to the city system, there's shut-off valves for connections to the city system. Those are going to be the responsibility of the city. And it typically is in that easement area between the sidewalk and a curb many times, but it varies by the location and by where things are after many, many years of what's happened with property lines and things of that nature. So typically, that's close to the breaking point or the delineating point for whose responsibility is what. But that's all determined on a case-by-case basis. So if something happens and you're having an experience at your home, you can contact us at the water department and ask for somebody to come out and take a look at it. And we'll determine if it's our problem or your problem, and then give you that information and let you proceed on the repair. But if it's something that gets initiated by us, like a shut-off or something like that, that's going to typically be in the city system because that's what we're touching. And that's how these kind of expenses come up. The resident that asked about that in the past was related to a shut-off, I believe. Hopefully, that answers the question, but it's a case-by-case thing.
Approval of the minutes. Need a motion?
May I approve the minutes as presented?
Second roll call. Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
9B, request approval of management agreement with RT Arena Management LLC for the Mount Clemens Ice Arena. Need a motion?
Move to approve and adopt the, I'm sorry, got the wrong one. Move to approve the management agreement with RT Arena Management LLC for the management of the Mount Clemens Ice Arena for a period of six years.
Second.
On July 5th, 2012, the city commission approved a management agreement with RT Arena Management LLC for the Mount Clemens Ice Arena. Said agreement expires July 6th, 2015, and RT Management, Arena Management LLC has agreed to manage the arena for an additional six years. Therefore, the city attorney has drafted the attached management agreement between the city of Mount Clemens and RT Arena Management LLC, which administration is recommending for approval.
Hey, we do have Nick Holzke.
In the audience tonight for any questions? Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Mansour?
I'm wondering if the, it's on page 16 of the agreement, it looks like. I'm wondering if that repayment figure is accurate. $594,845.37.
Yeah, that was put into the contract specifically after reviewing what the exact status was, so it is up to date.
That is up to date?
Yes.
And I'm looking at this contract, for a six-year contract. In item number 8A, it talks about breaking down into every two years, giving increases in the contract of approximately, it looks like, $250 each time. Can you tell me what the rate was for July 14 through July 15? What this increase is?
I defer to Marilyn Delugie because I don't remember the exact figure. She has it in front of her, hopefully.
What page? Are you talking about the management fee? It's on page 18. And yes, it says a monthly management fee. It's on page 18, item number 8, management fee of manager. Right. 8.01, item A. Yes. Originally, it was a complicated formula that we had in there in the previous contracts. And it was based on, because also you realize we're coming up on our last year of bond payments. So some of the structure has been a little changed from previous years. But it was a formula that we had based on that he was able to pay the bond payments and, and of course, also on the other part, there's another section in here, too, that talks about net pay if we have over $100,000. Previous contract said that... That's item B? Right. That it was like 25% this time. We lowered it to 5%. 5, 10, 15, and 20. That's because we're looking also ahead to the future that we no longer have the bond payment. So once he meets his requirements of putting in so much into a capital improvement fund of sorts, we change that amount from 50 to 100,000 a year, up to $1 million to make repairs. But we also know that coming up is that we have repairs right off the get-go. But as for the roof, the parking lot, things like that that we're looking at. So what it is now is that for the first two years, he will receive a management fee of $3,000 per month. Previous, we had JRV was the management fee, and their contracts were $7,500 a month and $8,000. But now, it's been changed. Calculating different.
Might get added to it.
Your question was, what is it right now?
What?
What was it? In the prior contract, it was $2,500 for the first year. The second year was $3,000. Thereafter, it's $3,500 per month. He's never received the management fee, though, I don't believe, have you not?
No.
We've never reached that point. Because if you look all the things that have to be paid first, he's never reached the management fee. He's never received one. That's similar to the percentage, if there is a profit down the road. The paragraph B where it talks about him receiving a percentage of those profits, that was in the prior contract. And that, of course, never happened either. Because he turned it around. Under the prior management, we were going under, we were contributing each year to pay the bonds, and he's done a fabulous job. He's turned it around, and we never had to make a bond payment since he's been in there. He's made all the bonds.
And what is the, is that $594,000 figure the last of the bond payment?
No.
That's...
Actually, it goes back to back when JRV was the management company and the city loaned them money to do repairs to the places. The lighting, we updated the lighting, the music system, and the floor, the rubber mat floor.
It really isn't even his, it wasn't even under his operation. It was a prior operator that the city pumped in the money to make all those repairs because he was always losing money. And that's where that figure comes from. It's been carrying on for a number of years now.
Just to add from previous, the history. Previous years, the management company took their share before any payment to the bond and anything else that went on to the ice arena. And that was a, that was a problem that we had here as commissioners and administration because they were getting their money. And that's how we became, that's how we were short then to make sometimes the bond payment, and we had to take out a general fund. So when Nick came in, we said, no, bond payment first, and then anything after that goes to salaries and things. So that's kind of the history of it, just to give you a background.
I also see in here that there are monthly reports. It's noted in a couple of different places that the manager shall provide the city with detailed reports and records relating to all revenues and expenditures, direct or indirect, on the ice arena on a monthly basis by the 15th of the following month. I would like to suggest that a report for the ice arena be included in the quarterly reports that we do for all department heads. Yeah, that report relates to the trial balance. So I receive monthly a trial balance from Nick. And that way, I can also calculate out the management fees and the making sure that the money is going where it's supposed to go.
We have been providing, and Nick has been providing, I should say, a monthly report recently did not have that information you're talking about because that's kind of, as she's saying, it's a trial balance type of, it's more of an accounting report. It might be a little beyond the pale for most people's interest. But we can include some kind of a summary on the finances if you're interested, so.
A quarterly report like the others. A quarterly report like the other departments. Just to give us an update on what's going on.
Yeah, he does provide that. We'll add a little bit of a financial flavor to it, so we have a better idea on that front, perhaps. I can work with Nick on something like that. Sure.
Anyone else? Commissioner Raker?
Sir, the previous contract was for three years. You're asking for six. I think this question will probably answer that. It seems like you've been a very good steward of this resource. So what did you do to turn this around? And like, did you, you have a greater client base, relationships you built with, certain maybe hockey leagues or et cetera?
Yes, we've increased business every year. Took care of the customers that were there, that were already there. I've worked, this will be my 19th year there. So I was already managing the building with the prior management company in place. So when that management company wasn't there anymore, I just kept doing what I was doing all along. Yes, we have increased everywhere. We've increased business through the youth hockey, adult hockey. We've increased everywhere, so yes.
Who are some of your clients?
Mount Clemens Hockey Association is our number one tenant. That is the youth hockey association. Mount Clemens Figure Skating Club, De La Salle High School, Dakota High School, Lance Cruz North High School. Yeah.
Is De La Salle still their home base?
Yes, yes.
Do I dodge?
Yeah, we were able to move them over from another ice arena.
Anyone else? Well, first of all, I want to congratulate you for being the, in the number one or in the three arenas, in the best of whatever it's called, best of Macomb County, best of, the four, Channel 4 that did that. So Mount Clemens Arena was in there. So congratulations for that.
Thank you very much.
And I, for one, have been around a long time. I've been here, unfortunately, I hate to say that, when the ice arena was built. And I can't say enough of what you have done. And I think it's a breath of fresh air to know that you have worked with us when we were going through some hard times. Now that the bond is going to be paid, I'm hoping that, you know, you will be able to reap some of those benefits now and improve the arena where it needs to be approved and feel better knowing that the bond's taken care of. So for me, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, roll call. Mensah?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
9C, request approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Downtown Development Authority for partial funding of the city economic development program. I need a motion?
Move to approve the attached memorandum of understanding between the city of Mount Clemens and the Downtown Development Authority for partial funding of... Clemens and the Downtown Development Authority for partial funding of a city economic development program by the DDA in the amount of twenty thousand dollars per year and to authorize the mayor to sign the document.
Support.
As part of our recently completed fiscal year 2016 budget process, the city has budgeted for an economic development program. This program, while citywide in focus, will also focus on the Downtown Development Authority area. The DDA wanted the added support and assistance afforded by this program and was willing to participate with partial funding of the costs associated with the program for which is estimated at sixty thousand dollars per year. The DDA has signed a memorandum of understanding, which spells out the funding to be provided by the DDA in the amount of twenty thousand dollars per year. That basically is when the program starts, after the program starts. So the memorandum of understanding is attached. This was a subject of a lot of discussion during the budget process, and if you have any questions related to the MOU or anything else, please ask.
Any questions? Commissioner Raker?
I just want to make a comment thanking you publicly for your responsiveness to this request. When we had maybe more meetings about the budget than we anticipated, I look at this as a mutually beneficial agreement for everyone involved, and so I thank you for your management and leadership in making this happen.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I thank the DDA for chipping in and pulling their half of the bargain. I think that they have always stood strong for the City of Mount Clemens, and they're doing their part again. So thank the DDA.
Yeah, that was an example, if I can say real quick, Your Honor, of the DDA moving quickly, as well as the city moving quickly, and I compliment the DDA and the board for jumping to the task and getting a meeting together very quickly, so we can get it taken care of as part of the budget process, which was the request. So not easily accomplished, and it was accomplished easily in spite of that, so.
Roll call.
Raker.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Mansour.
Yes. Okay, nine D, request city commission approval of a contract for utilities department management. I need a motion?
I move to enter into a professional services agreement for day-to-day management and oversight of the utilities department with F and V operations and resource management for one year on a not-to-exceed basis with an option to extend as approved by the city commission and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement as finalized by the city attorney.
I need a second.
City administration has previously taken several steps to fill the vacancy in our utilities director position, which was created by the retirement of the prior incumbent. These steps included a hiring search, as well as investigation of various contractual alternatives for providing day-to-day management oversight and direction to our wastewater treatment plant, water treatment plant, and the associated collection and distribution function. City administration also conducted a request for qualifications or an RFQ process for management services related to our utilities department. As a result of the RFQ, F and V Operations and Resource Management, FVOP, was selected as our preferred respondent, and discussions with FVOP for provision of professional services were held. This item has been discussed at a variety of commission meetings over the past few months, and has been the subject of prior memos as well. I've provided that associated documentation for your review under separate cover, and I'm happy to provide a summary of those other memos if anybody's interested. The last discussion of May fourth, two thousand and fifteen, requested investigation of a possible collaboration with a neighboring community. That was investigated prior to that, was what was more thoroughly investigated after that request, and it has been determined mutual interest in pursuing this collaboration does not exist due to legal concerns and other issues. City administration is therefore recommending the city finalize a professional services agreement with FVOP for day-to-day management and oversight of our utilities department. The agreement will reflect an hourly equivalent rate and a not-to-exceed cost. Hours and cost can be reduced as conditions and performance warrant. Additional information is again attached to this agenda item with the prior memos, as well as the F and V scope of service document, as well as a professional services agreement, as it has been discussed and negotiated preliminarily between FVOP and the city.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Raker?
City Manager Brown, you and I have gone back and forth on this. I think you've done a great job as far as bringing different options, listening to the concerns of the commission, and I did say that I was, if we exhaust all of our options, but the one option that we didn't exhaust is reposting it. I think Commissioner Mansour had mentioned that. And since we haven't done that, at seventeen thousand dollars a month, that's pretty substantial. I think once we get into this contract, I don't have a crystal ball, but I don't think we're going to be so quick to opt out of it, so we're going to be two, three, four months into it, and maybe going down the road of getting a second, posting the job for a second time at a more robust pay scale is going to be seventeen times two or three, you're at least thirty-four thousand dollars that we may not have needed to spend. And so I like the work that you've done up to this point. I just wish that we would have reposted it again. Had we done that and not received any qualified candidates, I would be in support of this. But because that one aspect has not been fulfilled, I can't support it as it is right now. And if my colleagues wanted to table this until that is executed, I would encourage you to consider that. But if it's, you know, not the pleasure of this commission, so be it.
Commissioner Mansour?
So I looked at what you provided today dated March twelve, under the scope of services, and under the first bullet point, it says, "Provide properly certified operators for the water treatment, wastewater treatment, and transmission and storage facilities." I looked at your memo from April thirtieth, I looked at the one from April sixteenth, and I looked at the one from March, a separate one from March twelfth. And you know what? We have properly certified staff over there. Your memo specifically from April thirtieth says, "We need a Class A license for wastewater," and we have that in Robert Picar, or Picar. It says a F-one license for water treatment. We have that in Leonard Bertrand. And we also have an S-two license for water distribution in John Dobson. I inquired about the difference between an S-one license and an S-two license, and there are actually four levels of S licenses for water distribution. The highest is, of course, an S-one license, but the state doesn't require an S-one license to handle the distribution of wastewater. So we have somebody, and we have had people since Mr. Bellmore left us to fulfill these duties. I look at these memos, and this one specifically says dated March twelfth, it allows city employees to remain city employees. This one says, "Review and recommend assignment of all employees engaged in the operation and maintenance of the Mount Clemens Water and Wastewater Treatment Plant." And this one yet says something, you know, something else. Recommendations and directions regarding basic staffing. I believe that we have good staff there. We have licensed staff that fills the state requirement. They have been running this plant for, what, Mr. Bellmore's been gone a year? And I do not see any guarantee in here that our staff will retain their union, city jobs that, and I need that. In addition, it says here that in their scope of services, it says, "Respond to customer inquiries regarding non-billing related operational issues. Cooperate with and assist city staff in responding to billing as requested." So if our staff is going to continue to bill these services, and our licensed staff are going to continue to run, you know, to operate in these positions overseeing these three areas, I quite frankly can't figure out why we're going to pay seventeen thousand dollars a month for a hundred and eighty hours for a management company to do things like, here's one, "Make recommendations to the city regarding maintenance and repairs needed on the water, wastewater, and transmission systems, including but not limited to painting. Painting, equipment repair, and building maintenance." Can't pay seventeen thousand dollars for that. Review assets of the city and come up with an asset inventory. I don't think that that's going to take a year. I don't think that that, for them to do. I don't think that, it says here in one of the bullet points, " Submitting monthly water and wastewater operating ports and other reports as required by the MDEQ, as well as schedule sampling and monitoring activities." You know what? Our staff is already doing that and is fulfilling those requirements and have kept those requirements up from this, to the state. They're already providing the support for water and wastewater treatment process control. I see this as a pork barrel contract. And I will be voting no.
Commissioner Raker?
City Manager Brown, if you, you and I had spoke in regards to, and we understand that even though when you contract out a service, there's still a need for oversight. And so what do you have in place, or what will you propose to have in place to provide some oversight to make sure that we're getting the absolute most out of this seventeen thousand dollar a month contract, please?
Real quickly, in response to Commissioner Mansour's comments, first, I'll start with the fact of the matter is that when those three individuals that were mentioned were in place currently without management, that's our current arrangement. In the past, we had those same three individuals that were in place when Chuck Bellmore was here as a director, and you have a director to oversee an entire operation, to make sure that the entire operation is being run appropriately, consistently, and effectively and efficiently. So, you know, same question, why did we need Chuck Bellmore when we had these three individuals on staff? The fact of the matter is, we need an overall management direction for the facility. This facility is one of the most important and critical functions that the city performs. In fact, I might argue that it's maybe the most critical function, since you're dealing with providing safe drinking water, you're dealing with providing safe, healthy, and effective transmission of waste products, treatment of wastewater. These are critical functions, and because of that, you have a level of management that goes beyond the people that we currently have in place. That's been the practice for years. Chuck Bellmore was the highest-paid city department head when he was here for a reason, because it's a critical function that requires attention at a director level of employee, which we don't currently have with arrangement that we have. Regarding the license question, yes, those individuals have licenses that they receive, frankly, through their employment with the City of Mount Clemens. We provided experience, we provided the opportunity to get training, the opportunity to get that experience, the opportunity to get job experience that allowed them to get those licenses. However, when Chuck Bellmore left, who had all of those licenses, the reporting was done under Chuck Bellmore. Now that Chuck Bellmore is gone, an arrangement was made preceding me with the employees that were there to provide an additional payment to them, which is substantial, fifteen thousand dollars per employee in terms of extra pay for the right to use those licenses instead of having a director in play. So the reason why this company has proposed to provide licensed certified operators is because I directed them to put that into their proposal, so that we can eliminate those payments to those employees and go back to the standard payment, the hourly rate that they're entitled to otherwise, because we will have other people with licenses that will handle the reporting, and we won't have to quote-unquote "use their license" to do the reporting. So if you look at the cost of this proposal, two hundred and four thousand dollars over the year, you can take forty-five thousand dollars off that cost, because the city will be reducing our expenses because of them having those licenses. Now, getting back to Commissioner Raker's question about how to maintain accountability with this, with this company, I too think that's critical, and I think that it's something that we need to pay a lot of attention to. You're making a substantial investment into receiving professional, efficient, and effective management of those resources. And I've got a proposal, or a proposed draft evaluation document, which basically takes the scope of services and breaks it down into eight different categories of service: personnel management, asset management, facilities management, operations management, safety, training, and administration. Breaks down those different pieces in the scope of service document into those categories and allows for rating the company to make sure that we're receiving the bang for the buck that we really need to focus on receiving, because I recognize this is a substantial investment into management. It's more expensive than I thought it was going to be. I think it's more expensive than this body had thought it was going to be. Determined through other investigations that that kind of outside management company, management experience and professional expertise is expensive, and it's more expensive than I anticipated. However, keep in mind, I just mentioned that we're going to be able to reduce some expenses that are associated with our current operations to offset some of those expenses. So I do have a document, if anybody's interested in seeing it. It's a draft document, three pages long, basically breaking down those scopes of services that's provided in the document into different categories that we will then evaluate. I would propose to start off with that, at least on a monthly basis, that I would sit down with the representative of the company. The company's proposing to provide a hundred, a hundred and eighty hours on a monthly basis of staffing, and that's going to be basically split between one to three employees. There's going to be a client manager that will be engaged with us, and there will be two project managers that will be engaged with us that have those licenses that we referenced in the document. So those employees will provide different levels of service, different levels of expertise, and I think that's one of the main benefits of this kind of a management contract. No matter how good or whatever an individual employee is, that individual employee has a set of experiences, capabilities, knowledge, and experience that they bring to the table. This is a company that has a variety of employees that they can bring to the table when they need them. So if there's a specific problem that we want to have addressed that those three employees that I mentioned don't have a skill set for, they can bring in another employee to address that problem with a subject matter expert and provide us the benefit of that within that one hundred and eighty hours that would be available to us. And I think that's one of the key benefits of a management contract. There's an entire company behind them, multiple employees that have different skills and abilities and knowledges and experiences that they have through the years that they can bring to bear on a problem that we might experience. So I'm comfortable that it's expensive, but it will be justified in the long run. In terms of the advertisement of the position, that's something that I've talked about openly with a couple of people that expressed interest with that, that I think that we should do that. I think, however, that we should retain this company to begin with. I think that if we do bring somebody in, they will have the benefit of, if it's a four-month engagement, if it's a five-month engagement, if it's a year engagement, whatever it is, before we bring somebody in potentially down the line, they're going to have the benefit of the expertise that was brought to bear on this situation that would improve things. There were things that weren't done for many, many years, an asset management plan, people letting, you know, kind of disparagingly talk about paint. Well, one of the key criteria of that is, you know, if you work in an environment that's not taken care of, you end up not taking care of your responsibilities, and you end up not having pride in your workplace and in the work you're doing. It's difficult to maintain pride in your own work when the facility you're working in with exhibits neglect and shows that it's being neglected. So while you can say that it seems unimportant to do something basic like paint, it's something that I think is important. There are people that come into that facility and comment on it the way that it looks, areas that look like it hasn't been paid, they have not been paid attention to, and that kind of stuff translates into pride in the organization, pride in the facility, and pride in the work. So that's a basic thing that they recommend, that's true. They're going to provide a lot of expertise, there's a lot of things in the scope of service that they talk about. That capital asset plan is something that hasn't been done in forever, and we pay the price for that. When you don't have a firm grasp of what's about to break loose, what's about to break, you're in a reaction mode, you're in a crisis management mode, and if we can get action on an asset plan and then a capital improvement plan, it's going to yield a benefit to us and allow us to avoid those kind of things and to plan for those things proactively and effectively. So it's expensive, but I think it's warranted.
Three quick questions, and I'll wrap it up.
Yes.
When do you anticipate that this position will be advertised?
I could start advertising, I would advocate probably after I get the benefit of some experience from this management company, so I'd be looking at it sometime down the road, a month or two into their work, so that I get some feedback from them about what's going on at the plant, what's, what kind of issues persist, and that kind of thing.
This is more than three more, two more questions.
Sure.
When then, if this gets approved, when will this company begin work?
They put in their proposal that within thirty days, but I've had multiple experiences, multiple conversations with them, where they've assured me that they would love to get started much, not only love to get started much sooner, but have the ability to get started much sooner. So I would expect them to get started within a few weeks of award.
So early fall, we should be anticipating an advertisement?
Let's see, I'm going to say, if, you know, let's say hypothetically, we get approval today, I would think they'd be starting at July one ballpark. So July, August, September, that's more than that. I'd put somewhere in the August, the end of August, September timeframe, I would say that would be appropriate.
The capital, the capital improvement inventory.
Yeah.
When do you anticipate that, how forceful are you going to be in them assessing and, hey, this is the product that we want back from this outside agency?
If you look at the scope of services, they talk about coordinating with the city engineer on that, and that makes a lot of sense to me, and it makes a lot of sense- engineer on that. And that, that makes a lot of sense to me and makes a lot of sense to our representative from AEW, Kyle, that is our engineer. That's something that I would be a little bit premature if I were to say how long I think that's going to take. I could come up with an idea, you know, once, once they get in, get in and take a look at it and get a better handle on it, they can give me a pretty good idea of when that would be. But I can assure you, that's kind of, in my estimation, it's job one. Besides getting the hands around the day-to-day management, I'll call it job 1A and 1B. It's the first thing I'm going to ask them to focus on beyond day-to-day management is getting a handle on where we're at in terms of the equipment, so that we can avoid some of the experiences that we've had even in my tenure with things breaking down and having to do bids on them when, when maybe we could have acted proactively and known they were going to break down and to replace them ahead of time. So, that's going to be job 1A, 1B for me, it'll be soon.
Last question is, you're going to have, will they be here present for quarterly reports?
Yeah, they, they said that they could.
Okay.
That's, that's something that we can, I would, I would advocate for sure having them there to begin with, just for you to get familiar with them and all that. After a period of time, maybe have them submit a written report that I can summarize because of the, we're paying for it, you know, we're giving up hours otherwise. But I think at first, that makes a lot of sense.
Commissioner Barton, did you have?
I'll go first.
Okay.
The $15,000 you're talking about per employee, let's break that down. You're giving them an hour a day overtime apiece. So, that's a little bit different than handing them a $15,000 check. Second of all, is that, are those three plans shorthanded?
Shorthanded? There's never been any, I mean, they're as shorthanded as every other operation, I suppose. There could be positions that could be filled there, just like in accounting, just like in the DPS, HR, anywhere else.
Exactly. So, the, so the-
We're certainly not overstaffed.
The probability of these three, three areas are being understaffed is great. So, have we talked to our employees? Have we asked our employees what they see as a capital improvement inventory? Have we talked to them about what equipment they recommend that we fix right away? Have we, have we discussed any of this at length or at all with the employees? Have we given them the opportunity to have assistance and help by the way of extra employees to, you know, do these cleanup things that, so that they can have pride in their workplace? Or are they just simply so shorthanded and so overworked, like the rest of our departments, that they can't do these things? And but bringing in a management contractor at $17,000 a month, we could probably hire three employees to do this and, and promote from within and not have this expense and, and treat our employees well.
Okay. Please.
I guess I'll back up on the first thing, or the last thing she said. I mean, okay, you're picking out one thing here about painting some areas. There's a long list of things that he's mentioned that are things that need to be taken care of, need to be looked at, need to be managed. And that, that item is just not, it's one minor thing in the whole list of things that he has to do.
It is.
So, I don't, I don't see the comparison of talking about hiring a person to come in and do some painting when we have a whole area that needs to be managed. First of all, I would like to mention to you, this, this is a management issue. We should not even be discussing this. And, and I think that if we were to have a work session on our scope of operations, we might kind of narrow down some of the things that we're talking about here. But anyway, moving on from that, we can opt out of this contract at any time. Is that not right?
30 days.
30-day notice.
Correct.
So, if we get into this contract and we find that we can do better or do good, do well in any other management capacity or stream, then we can do that. We can get out of the contract and go into another contract that would cover our issues. I don't think we need to push this thing down the road any further. Mr. Belmore left a year ago. We need to put somebody in that position to do what he was doing that kept our system as good as it was going. All right? And if it needed better improvements, then yes, okay, fine. But the whole point is, at this point, we're not having the same management, the same degree of skill going in there that we had when Chuck Belmore were here. So, let's not kick it down the road. Let's go ahead and put somebody in there. And if we find somebody better, wonderful, put them in, in place and we can get out of our contract at any time. I, you know, I just, I don't see the necessity of making this thing a longer issue. It's, it, let the people come in, let them get started, let them do what they need to do. And if, if we can find some way of replacing or bettering their, their efforts, then we can do that. If you want quality, you're going to have to pay for it. I'm through.
Okay. I have a couple of comments that I'd just like to make. First of all, I don't think we're treating our employees bad. And I think that's a terrible comment to even make, that we're not treating our employees properly. These people had those skills and they had those certificates. They, we are paying them extra, which is beyond something that I can't comprehend, because that's part of their job. And because I have a degree, now you're going to pay me extra? I, I just, it bothers me a little bit about that. But anyway, that being said, we are hiring a management company. There's the difference. We're not hiring employees. We're hiring a management company, which is needed for various reasons which were mentioned. They're in the scope of this whole thing. It's a year contract. It gives administration time to really assess what needs to be done, go out and see if we can hire another, quote Chuck Belmore. But you heard tonight some of the things that are going wrong. Grass not being cut, the smell. I can tell you that we had that issue before and Chuck Belmore came in when he was at Clinton Township because he got phone calls. And he came in and he took care of it because the ozone wasn't turned on. Those are things a manager has to do, not the employees. They're doing their job, but they're not managers. And this man can't do it all. He can't do it all. We need to have somebody in there right now. We have one whole year. It's a revenue-making department. Chuck Belmore went out and was able to sell more of the sewage. That brought more money into the city. We're not, we don't have anybody right now out there advocating for us that we can sell more water in some areas that are, that we can do that to, or sewage, or take the sludge in. We have sludge sitting over there that should have been removed months and months ago, but there's no oversight that we have. There goes the smell. So, we need, at this point in time, we need a management company to come in, make an assessment, and hopefully within a year, we will be able to move on and gives you plenty of time to assess it. But we've played around with this too long. It's a year. I'm very concerned. It's our water we're drinking. And so, in that case, I'm voting yes. Commissioner Rager.
Two quick questions. Will, will this company have any authority as far as discharge and discipline of employees, or is that still going to be handled by you?
They're going to, that would be handled by me. They're going to be providing the, you know, the eyes on the ground, if you will. You know, they'll be there day-to-day working with the employees. And if issues come up, they communicate it to me about those issues, and then I would act accordingly. But the discipline process would be handled through me still as, as the city representative.
Do you foresee the possibility of this company displacing a current, a current employee?
No, there's no, there's no direction from this office to do that. There's no predisposition on the company's part to do that. In fact, they made a comment that was pretty similar to Commissioner Manzner's comment about the fact that, you know, we're, we're running with a light staff, obviously, as we are in most of our functions. And one of the things they're going to advocate for is cross-training, so that that is going to maximize our ability to handle things when we, when we're, you know, if somebody's on vacation or if something like that comes up. So, that's one of, going to be one of their focuses coming in, into this opportunity if they get it, to cross-train employees. They also mentioned encouraging employees to get certifications and to further certifications. They're very much interested in seeing employees advance themselves, and they would like to see our employees take on additional responsibilities as they get familiar with the M method of operation, if you will, that the O P is going to be putting into place. So, that's something they actively articulated with me, that they would like to see the city employees take on more responsibility in the long run. So, yes.
The contract itself, under scope of services, clearly sets forth that they, the city will continue to support the administrative functions for the existing city staff to be supervised by F and B. It also says the city employees assigned to these facilities direct and supervise them. It further goes on to say, weekly administrative oversight of your operation staff, the city staff. They are not going, going to be bringing in employees. They are going to be supervising our employees.
Is that in the professional services agreement?
Yeah.
From the scope?
It's under the scope of services.
What page of the agreement is that on?
Well, the first paragraph of the scope of services, page 28.
I remember reading that.
Yeah.
Just going back to the scope of services document there.
That's, that's not the contract.
Sure is.
Sure is. It's part of it.
It's part of the contract.
It's part.
It's part and parcel of the contract. The contract includes the scope of services. It includes the boilerplate. It includes the RFP package.
Okay, I'm just looking at this service agreement that you have to actually sign.
Well, we're talking to be together, scope of services and that form the contract.
Okay.
But they're not, they're not going to have-
Let's take a vote. I think we've labored this enough.
Employees and-
I call for a motion here. Let's take a vote. Let's get it up or down.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
And Sir?
No.
No.
Thank you. All right, moving right along here to 9E, request approval to enter into agreement with the inspector services in the community development department. I need a motion.
Move to approve the agreements for inspector services between the City of Mount Clemens and Matthew M. Berman, Joseph A. Orr, and Michael L. Farren and Fusion Electric, Inc., and to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the same.
Second.
Matthew M. Berman will provide building official, building inspector, and mechanical inspector services and shall receive an annual fee. Do you want to get into, do you have any issue with getting into any of these, don't we?
No.
All right. $54,000 and be paid bi-weekly for said services. Joseph Orr will provide plumbing inspector services and shall receive an annual fee of $34,000 and again, be paid bi-weekly for said services. Michael Farren will provide rental inspection services and shall receive an annual fee of $48,000 and be paid bi-weekly for said services. Fusion Electric will provide electrical inspector services and shall receive an annual fee of $34,000 and be paid bi-weekly. With city commission approval, the one-year contract shall become effective July 1, 2015, and expire on June 30, 2016. One note that I'll make, the rental inspection is reflective of the increase in hours from a part-time arrangement to a full-time arrangement, which has been talked about numerous times with the city commission over the past few months.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Rager?
What are the regular hours for our inspectors? Like how does, if I were to request a electrical permit?
I'll defer to Brian.
Yeah, the inspection, the inspectors generally work Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. They're in the office for about an hour in the morning, and they go out to do their inspections. They do their inspection until they're completed, generally in the morning. We can make arrangements for inspections on a Monday or a Friday if requested.
What about weekends?
No.
Yeah, I'm not sure of any community that performs weekend inspections.
The normal procedure is that you call and make an appointment. Is that not right?
For an inspection?
Yes.
Correct. Yeah, we do have an inspection outline that, that is available.
Yeah.
This is somewhat revenue neutral, isn't it, in some respects with the, depending on the number of permits and inspections?
Right, depending on the number of permits, this past year, fiscal year, definitely.
Yes.
And that's, that's kind of what I'm looking for, as far as like the number of permits and the cost that we incurred. One, I want to make sure that we're getting, we're recovering our costs as close to, it can be. And I think on the previous statistics that were provided, the rental inspections, it was Commissioner Manzner, was it 900 or roughly around 900?
For 2014, you, total rental inspections.
Is that Monday through Friday like a regular? Because, I mean, it was sizable and just-
Yeah, those are not all direct rental inspections where the, the rental inspector's out at a property. Those numbers include other actions that are occurring in terms of, and I believe that's outlined on that spreadsheet that I submit. There are other follow-up actions that are done, not, it's not necessarily a physical inspection.
So, that, because when I did the basic math, like roughly 900 of, and if they're only work, that's why I was asking, does he work five days a week instead? Because then maybe over five days over the course of a year, you might be able to get nine hours.
No. Same as the other inspectors. He will be moving to five days with, with the increased contract amount. But again, those 906, that figure is not direct, all direct inspections. There are other actions that are included in there. And I can, I'm more than happy to break that out a little bit more, so it's more, more clear.
Also, I think you should keep in mind that they are independent contractors. They're not employees. At one point in time, they were employees. And as an independent contractor, they're not going to be working 40 hours a week. They're not going to be totally directed by the city. That's one of the criteria to be independent.
Well, what about if you were independent and you were paid by the inspection? Has that ever been considered?
That is an arrangement that there are, you can do it that way. A lot of the private companies that provide inspection, building inspection services often do it on a permit basis.
And that's, that's kind of like the comparison I'm looking for as far as like that in compared to like a straight $54,000 revenue stream?
Yeah, the, the original contract amounts, if I'm not mistaken, the city did go through an RFP process to contract out all of the building department services. And the original contract amounts, starting in July of 2011, I believe were based on some of the figures the city received through that RFP process.
Anyone else? Roque?
Campbell?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dempsey. My first to the Dempsey.
Yes.
Phil was yes. Manzner?
Yes.
Rager?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, 9F, request approval of the 2014-2015 fiscal year budget amendments for all of the city funds. Need a motion?
I move to amend the City of Mount Clemens 2014-2015 fiscal year budgets as submitted.
I'm sorry, I've stopped it on everyone's-
Second.
You seconded it.
Oh, I didn't hear.
I thought he did. Okay.
Support.
You're in vacation mode already.
Sorry about that. Attached, please, find the budget amendments for all city funds. Michigan's Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act, as amended by Public Act 621 of 1978, requires subsequent amendments to the original adopted budget general appropriations resolution for any activity that exceeds its budget appropriation. Attached is a memo which summarizes the adjustment requests in each fund. The complete document has been provided under separate cover. And there's a summary spreadsheet as well as a memo from Marilyn DeLudi that is in the package to cover the general summation of this information.
Okay, comments, question? Commissioner Manzner?
I'm looking at a $75,000 increase in refund or rebates. Can you speak to that?
Every year, we receive refunds from Blue Cross Blue Shield, from the district court, from workers' comp, Medicare Part D. And this year, our Blue Cross Blue Shield came in higher than expected. It's, I never know from year to year how much we'll actually get as a refund back for Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Under the revenue, I'm also looking at a $34,000, you know, I went through this and I skipped everything that was under 10 grand. I'm looking at a $34,000 increase in building permits and an 17,600 dollar increase in forfeited performance bonds. Can somebody speak to those?
Performance bonds are bonds that are deposited with a building permit. They aren't claimed, they don't finish the project, and at the end of each year, we claim the performance bonds.
Okay.
And what was the other one? Was the-
Building permits.
The building permits are way over. If you see that it's over quite a bit because of the county and their building permits.
A $35,000 decrease in revenue for the recreation program fees?
Because Nick no longer- Because Nick no longer takes care of the recreation. He was renting it out, and now the city will get the funds from the community center, but we also took over the baseball diamonds and all of those. So now, we receive the revenue, and the next line down, you'll see the revenue in there.
Okay. I'm looking at a $10,000 increase in telephone costs for building and grounds?
Last year, we signed the contract July 1st, and so, we don't know the rates until we actually get them.
Okay. Tax tribunal refunds jumped from 7,000 to 43,500?
Yes, we had several tax tribunals that were settled towards the end of the year, and now through the county, they bill us back. There was a couple of large ones that we had, and I think one of them was downtown. I'd have to get to the list of which ones we did.
Those are outside of our control, that's.
Yeah, yeah, once they're settled, the state tax commission sends us the changes, and then the county bills us for the amount, for the city's portion.
$30,000 increase in major traffic control maintenance for equipment maintenance and service agreements?
In which one? I didn't hear.
A major traffic control, equipment maintenance and service agreement.
That was for a signal, a new traffic signal. There was quite a few purchases in there that I saw and, for signals.
Okay. Get a $10,000 increase in the TIPA transfer to the DDA?
Yes, because on the opposite side, for the special events, there was an increase, and we needed the additional funds to be transferred over.
Okay. I've got a $100,000 increase in sewer disposal charges.
If you look at the Septic Vector Jet, you'll see an increase there, a large increase, actually.
And then, a $25,000 increase in machinery and equipment, again, in sewers and utilities.
Machinery and equipment, while we've had, I don't know if you can address what we purchased.
Yeah, there's been a couple of things that I mentioned earlier when we were on that other agenda item, things breaking loose that have been replaced, and that's likely related to replacement of equipment that failed.
Okay, and I just wanted to comment that in looking at this, this is really technically our fifth budget. This budget was missing the ice arena fund, the public improvement fund, and the sidewalk fund, so am I to assume that those remain the same from budget four?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Call roll, please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raeger?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
9G, "Request to adopt the procedure and guidelines describing fees associated with the Freedom of Information Act FOIA requests." Need a motion?
I move to adopt the Freedom of Information Act FOIA procedures and guidelines in accordance with PA 563 of 2014 as presented effective July 1st, 2015.
Support.
In December 2014, the state legislature made significant changes to the Freedom of Information Act 442 of 1976. These changes go into effect on July 1st, 2015. The new regulations require public bodies to establish specific written procedures and guidelines for FOIA requests, including a separate written summary informing the public on how to submit FOIA requests, how to understand the public body's responses to FOIA requests, deposit requirements, fee calculations, and avenues for challenging and appealing the public body's denial of a request. The governor signed the new legislation into law as Public Act 563 of 2014. Under the new law, municipalities must adopt procedures and guidelines describing fees associated with FOIA requests.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Mensah. Just under Section 7, Appeal of Denial or of a Public Record, I was just wondering why we're not doing that to the office of the city manager, and we're instead doing it to the office of the mayor?
Because the state statute says.
State statute says.
And I don't do anything with it, so don't worry. You don't have to worry about me.
I, actually, I don't worry about you. I just wondered what, you know, why we weren't doing it to the city manager. Commissioner Raeger.
Could the city manager or the clerk just give a narrative to the public as to what is different from the way we currently do business? Because I, it's been years since I've put in a FOIA, and so as I was going through it, it looks reasonable, but what is different that the public, when they come in, needs to expect?
I would defer to Lisa Morgaster, city clerk, on that. She attended the training and has been ready than I ever will.
Well, the state wanted to make guidelines for all cities so that everybody was doing everything uniformly and charging uniformly as well. So, really, the procedure is the same. People still submit a written request, we still have five business days to reply. The charge is a little different, it's 10 cents per page of a copy that is wanting to be made, but there's also other charges, including labor costs, copying, postage, redaction fees and stuff that are also added now. But like I said, it's, the state just wants a uniform guideline so that every city is handling FOIAs exactly the same way. So that's the only difference. Everything else is the same, a few little different charges.
Before in the past, we would just charge for the sheik, correct?
Yes, it was just a paper copy cost.
Thank you.
So there may be a few more costs, but it depends on what it is that's requested, and charges rarely are incurred if it takes us more than 15 minutes to process or find or redact or anything.
And, real quick, like over a given time, like how many FOIA requests do you manage, like weekly, monthly, annually?
It depends, but I'd say probably no more than 50 in a year.
Okay.
Fire, police and fire records are handled through the fire department, they have more than we do, but it isn't anything that I see will be any major changes for anybody.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raeger?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
9H, "Author, authorization to allow the Mount Clemens Public Library to digitalize, preserve, and make available to the public historical commission and the historic district commission documents." Need a motion?
Move to approve, I'm sorry, move to authorize the Mount Clemens Public Library to digitize, preserve, and make available to the public historical commission and historic district commission documents. Wow. Anyway.
Second.
The historical commission and historic district commission prepare certain documents for public use, such as the annual homes tour brochures, walking tour brochures, and survey cards of properties. As a means of preserving these documents for historical use, the Mount Clemens Public Library has offered to digitize and make available to the public certain documents, and is requesting authorization from the city to do so.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raeger?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Okay, 9I, "Request approval to continue the publication and distribution of the city newsletter through the C and G newspapers." Need a motion?
I move to approve the printing and distribution of the Clementine's Newsletter on a quarterly basis at a cost of $1,250 per publication for 2015 and $1,390 per publication for 2016.
Support.
For the past eight years, the city has published a newsletter utilizing CNG newspapers for the distribution of the newsletter through the journal. We continue to receive very positive feedback from residents and various readers indicating they find the articles in the newsletter both informative and useful. For that reason, we would like to continue this publication, the formatting will stay the same. At this time, we're seeking approval to publish the newsletter at the schedule and rates listed below. As was mentioned, there are two publications, July, August, and September, and October, November, and December, that each will cost $1,250. January, February, March of 2016, and April, May, and June of 2016 will cost $1,390 each, for a total cost of $5,280. The prior rate was $1,070 per issue for a total cost per year of $4,280. This rate had not been changed for five years, so the company had been absorbing all cost increases during that time. The new total includes an increase of approximately 23.4%, which spread over the five-year period equates to about a 4.68% increase per year. The cost includes printing and distribution.
Comments, questions? Roll call.
Raeger?
No.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
No.
Okay, 9J, "Approve purchase and payments of invoices." Need a motion?
And before we get started, I'd like to ask for a quick correction or see if there's any concern about it. When this was first drawn up on number two, Pumps Plus Incorporated, there was $24,277 listed. That was the amount that was bid on a bid solicitation that we did. Subsequent to that, we've had kind of a, one of those aforementioned emergency situations where one of our pumps has failed. We think we're going to be able to get it back online, but I think that this kind of raises the urgency to get something done a little bit more quickly. The delivery time on that first item that was bid at $24,277 is 14 to 16 weeks. If we go with a more off-the-shelf pump and make some changes to the piping that we have on site, we can get it down to $23,020, and more importantly, get it within four to six weeks. So I would like the flexibility if we could have it awarded on the basis of the $24,277 with the understanding that city administration might pursue the alternative, which is a little bit cheaper and much more quick in arrival. I would like it to be approved at that $24,277 level, which is listed on the second page of the detail, it just got listed differently on the, on the front page. If you look at the last page of the document, there was two different prices listed, one at the $24,277, which lists the 14 to 16-week delivery time, and then the second one with the four to six-week delivery time at $23,020. So we might be able to, be able to do it for less money and receive it 10 weeks quicker, which would be beneficial to the city in both counts. But it would be beneficial if we awarded it for the higher amount so that we can go down, as opposed to for the lower amount. If it doesn't work out, we can't go up.
So on that specific item, so moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Any other questions on the purchase and payments? Roll call, please.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raeger?
Yes.
Consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raeger?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
City managers report.
On the good news front, recent press coverage of economic development in the city has been multiple and positive. The city has received recent and exciting coverage of economic development in our community. Cranes Detroit recently revisited Mount Clemens as a follow-up to an article from 1985 as part of their 30th anniversary issue. One article focused on the dual nature of Mount Clemens in terms of our being an office center slash county seat, as well as a center for the county and the region for entertainment. The second focused on how business owners often start small and then grow in downtown Mount Clemens. I wanted to congratulate the DDA for all the fine work they did in assisting with the pieces done by Cranes, as well as the work done in the first place to make them possible. Also, the Macomb Daily did an article covering recent purchase of the Muse Building and the Macomb Daily Building. These two important properties being in the hands of a new ownership offers an opportunity for new attention and activity for the city. We've included PDFs of the three articles for informational purposes in this package, as well as for anybody that wants to download them off the city website at cityofmountclemens.com. Secondly, seasonal help update, the city has advertised and filled a variety of seasonal positions in the DPS utilities and public housing functions. This help is an important complement to our dedicated full-time staff in these areas. I wanted to provide some kudos to the departments and Sarah Price and Human Resources for successfully completing this process.
Questions, comments?
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Mensah.
In February, we approved, we became a Purple Heart city. For six weeks now, I've been asking where that flag is and why it's not displayed. I'd like to hear an answer to that question today.
Yeah, the, initially, when you brought it up, tracked down the flag, and I've been working for the last, I don't know how many weeks it's been, to try to figure out how to get it either installed somewhere in City Hall, which is my distinct second choice, because I just think visibility, it's not going to be near as good as on a flag pole outside of the fire department, which is what my first preference is. However, we have a situation where there's no capacity on that pole unless it goes into a secondary position on the pole, and because of that, I've learned over the years that it's best to check with an expert on that. So I reached out to Anthony Lima, who works with us on that area and maintaining that flag pole area, for an answer. Since that time, Ann in the fire department has stepped in and tried to do some additional work in tracking down that answer, which has been a little bit slow in coming so far. The last communication I had on it was today at 3:11 PM from Ann at the fire department saying that she's had her second or third conversation with folks at the AMVETS and is waiting for a call back, and she will keep me posted as soon as that person gets in touch with us. So my first choice is to put it on a flag pole, and I want to make sure we're following proper protocol and not putting it in a position that's not appropriate. So that's the purpose of the phone call to the gentleman from the AMVETS. If I don't get something soon, we can always do a display inside of City Hall, but that's not my first choice.
I would like that flag displayed by the 4th of July.
I would like that as well.
And I think that we have two veterans on staff here, or on council, Commissioner Raeger and Commissioner Blash, they might be able to help with that. In addition, we can also speak to, what is his name, Prechter, Mr. Prechter?
I did speak to him.
Ann?
And I told him that I was touching base with Mr. Lima, and he was fine with that. He said, but if, you know, he basically said, "I would be fine with it if you displayed it at City Hall." My preference is not to do that, just from a sheer visibility standpoint, so trying to spend a little extra time to make sure it gets maximum visibility, and if we don't get an answer soon, we can decide to go inside of City Hall and come up with a display that's appropriate inside of City Hall.
Okay. We're supposed to be getting monthly statistical reports. We received Januaries and Februaries on March 27th. We haven't received any others since then?
Yeah, we've got some that was submitted, and that's, I'll follow up and get that out to you for the next time around, and we can get those two covered.
Okay. I tried to log into my city email this weekend, and the server was not found. I'm understanding that there are continual problems with computers throughout the city. We had problems with printers, couldn't print checks, there are continual problems at the fire department, and we just bought a server last year, I believe, in around June, and paid 11 grand for that. So why are we having these problems?
The server that we bought was related to the, to the email system, so that's been updated. However, this is the primary server known affectionately as Zeus that is giving us a problem currently. We just received a replacement server today, and it was about to be installed here, and I think we, once the update on that, I didn't get it before coming to the meeting to find out when we would have that accomplished.
Actually, he's installed it, and he's transferring the information from the old Zeus to the new Zeus. As long as the old Zeus doesn't turn itself off again, that's what we've been experiencing, that the server just would turn off for no reason.
Spontaneously.
There's no, yeah, there's no error reports. They've completely took it apart, looked at everything, everything looked fine. We've even rearranged the electrical in the back for it, and it just turns itself off. So, but as of today, the new one has been installed, and we're transferring the information over to the new one.
The interim step, we had taken the critical functions like units and the financial operations that we do, and we put that onto a virtual server that allowed us to have that functionality. So we were losing some functionality on email and some basic access to files here and there, which has been frustrating for staff, trust me, the staff included. But it's one of those, one of those things where we just had a failure on a server that was really, it really still hasn't been tracked down completely as to what the real issue is, but we've just moved on and purchased a new server. So that's, that's our current status. We should be back online tomorrow, it sounds like.
Well, hopefully, as long as everything transferred tonight and the old computer did not turn itself off again. But one of the issues too is that this computer is also eight years old.
Server.
The server is eight years old right now, so.
And the last issue is, can we talk about, or can you explain what's going on with the parking permits in the yellow lot?
Yeah, I can explain that. We have a situation where that lot is basically oversubscribed, if you will. The first three-month period when we had county users come into the system, so to speak, we had sold about 14 passes to county users. When they came back to us this time around, Jeff Wood, who handles the parking function for us, basically had looked into it and determined that we were selling beyond the parking spaces that we have available and wasn't comfortable that we could continue to sell those additional passes to the county. So, we did not make those sales, because we have existing users that have been buying parking passes from the city for years and years and years. And we were in a situation where we would either have to tell them, "We're going to sell you less so that we can sell some to somebody else," or we were going to basically be faced with a situation to turn away people that had approached us for buying passes again this time around from the county. So, that's the approach that we took, to not reduce what we were selling to existing customers. I do understand that we've come up with, rather, the, there is a solution that has been reached for those county users, which is actually probably more advantageous than buying passes from us. So, that problem has resolved, but that was the genesis of the problem.
Well, they resolved it by their renting space or leasing parking spaces from the new owner of the Macomb Daily Building. So, they're paying him for those spaces now.
Yeah, I didn't hear the details, but.
When I went through that lot at 3:18 on Friday, there was probably over 50 parking spaces empty. And I'm kind of curious how we're not doing this on a first-come, first-served basis. We sold them those parking passes, and from what I understand, it was somewhere closer to 20 or 21 spaces for the Planning and Economic Development Department and for the County Executive's Office staff. And we sold them those parking spaces the last week of April. We charged them for all of April, May, and June. So, the businesses in Mount Clemens, or the businesses that we're talking about, didn't have those parking spaces then. So, we're not doing this on a first-come, first-served basis?
They did have those parking spaces. It was oversold, oversold.
Yeah, they would have already had those parking passes, to my knowledge.
But there are a lot of empty spaces.
It's because of people come and go.
Right, there's, you know, people that come in and out of the parking lot. There's also people that come in and use the meters potentially in that parking lot. So, between what we've sold, just as, it was simple math, is the way I referred to it in a response that I did. When you take into account what we'd already sold with existing businesses that had basically purchased those, those spots over the years, and you compare that to the spots that were available, we had oversold the lot when you added in additional people. Now, you can get away with that potentially at certain points in time, based on, you know, whether people are coming in on that particular day. There might be students involved that are coming in on Mondays, but not Tuesdays and Wednesdays. You know, there's a variety of situations where there can be spots. But the fact of the matter is, we felt that we were oversubscribed, and we didn't want to get into a situation where we were creating conflict with people, and that's what we felt was going to happen. The other wrinkle to that is Oakland U's schedule picks up at the last month of this three-month period when there's going to have a full retinue of students coming back into play for Oakland U. So, we thought that there was going to be an issue there, and we observe issues there on certain days of the week at certain times of the day, so.
And we don't have any spaces in the blue lot or the red lot to sell?
The, there was, the spots that we have available would be here at City Hall, which are available if anybody wanted to purchase spots here. Which, if you compare that to a bad spot in the yellow lot, it's not much different in terms of the walk.
How many spaces are here in the city lot?
I don't understand, I don't know the number. I'd have to touch base with Jeff Wood, who's not here because of.
The last time I heard, it was five. What?
I think it's more than that.
Somebody told me it was five spaces.
I can.
That's all that was left.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's more than that.
No, 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 no. There's lots, lots of space.
Right, I don't think space is an issue.
No, take, spots for sale, that's what we're talking about. No, there's more.
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue, but I will double check.
No. Some of the prosecutor's office have purchased spots over here. Right. There's more. In fact, that's where they're referring them when they come in.
Correct.
They suggest this lot.
Which, again, if you compare it to a bad spot in the yellow lot, it's not much different in terms of walking distance.
Done.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Campbell?
I just have one thing. A resident that came in with regards to the smell of the water treatment plant, so that's been fixed?
Yes, it's being addressed. It's, actually, the retention basin is what she's speaking of. But that's, that has a odor control system that we had a mechanical issue with, but that was also addressed, and that's been put into, put into play. And it should be resolving that issue that was brought up in terms of.
And the grounds have been cleaned up, too, then?
Yes, that was not something that was mentioned to me when I spoke to Ms. Stevens. I did speak to Ms. Stevens prior to today. That's not something she mentioned to me. She didn't mention it this evening, but that was the first I heard of it.
Okay, that's it.
Commissioner Hill?
Well, this was quite a meeting tonight. We handled a lot of business. I'm glad that we finally have made a decision about the management of the wastewater and water plants. We, as Mayor Dempsey said, we've been kicking that can down the road for a year, and, and I'm glad we finally made a decision. And hopefully, things will move forward well. There is a leadership camp being offered to incoming freshmen for Mount Clemens Community Schools. It's being sponsored by CARE of Southeastern Michigan. And the camp is going to run from August 24th to August 28th. I think it's an excellent idea to give ninth graders some orientation before they start ninth grade. They're going to learn communication skills, practice teamwork, deal with change, refuse negative peer pressure, and make, learn about making healthy choices and decisions. The Monday through Thursday, the program will run from 10:00 AM to 2:30 PM, with lunch included. And on Friday, they're going to be taking a field trip between 8:00 AM and 4:30. So, if anyone knows any ninth graders that are entering the high school, I highly recommend this program. I'd also like to mention services of the Michigan State University Extension. They're offering a lot of different nutrition classes. There's a six-week Eat Healthy, Be Active. There's a cooking class for adults and teens. There is a class offered to people, taking them to the grocery store and learning how to make health choices. And there's a session for older adults to improve their health by increasing fruit and vegetable intake. And there's also a class for kids from kindergarten through eighth grade to learn about nutrition. So, if you are interested in any of those programs, they're free. You can contact the Michigan State Extension at 586-469-5816. I also wanted to congratulate all the people involved with the art fair and the car cruise. It was a great event. I was there both on June 6th and the 7th and made some substantial purchases from artists at the art fair. Had a good time. It was a nice event. I'm very encouraged by the sale of the Macomb Daily and the Muse Buildings and hoping for good things. And that's it for me tonight. Have a good evening and a great week.
Commissioner Raker?
I just have one comment. Sunday is Father's Day, so to all fathers, and especially my father, Joe Raker Jr., happy Father's Day.
Commissioner Manzer?
You know, the government does some weird things as far as, you know, honoring, you know, picking a day and honoring something. So, today is actually National Lobster Day. It is National Dairy Goat Awareness Day. And it all, is also the day in 1852 when a man named Mr. Jacobs developed a manufacturing process for ice cream. Ice cream has been my downfall all of my life, so I curse this day. Thank you.
Commissioner Bunton?
That's very good. June 21st is Father's Day. Happy Father's Day to all that it may apply. Being a father sets an example for young boys to observe and to emulate you, so do it well. And it also gives the daughters a goal to seek in finding a husband. Be a good father and enjoy your special day. Happy summer solstice. The first day of summer is also on June 21st. Many of you have been waiting to enjoy the warm sunshine of summer for a long time. So, enjoy it, because it won't last very long. The art festival was another great event by the DDA, by Anton Center, and the city of Mount Clemens. The art, the entertainment, the food, were all excellent. The antique auto exhibit was a pleasant walk down memory lane for some of us, and I thank you for the trip. Just a little note for dear Gary. Gary, get well, we miss you. And for the commissioner of wisdom for the night, this is by H. Jackson Brown. Success is what you, I'm sorry, success is getting what you want. Happiness is liking what you get. So, be happy, everybody, and have a great evening. Good night.
Thank you. On June 3rd, the court management council met, and we're pleased to announce again that the annual summary of the common fund revenue and expense report, we're going to distribute money again to the communities. And Mount Clemens will be getting a check for $42,136. So, thank you to the courts for doing a good job